Okay, one thanks for coming out. The time is now 6:00 PM. I call to order this regularly scheduled meeting of the Oconee County Council. Today's date is September 16th, 2025. We'll begin with a moment of silence. Mr. David Root, would you lead us in prayer?
Yes, pray with me if you'd like to. Well, dear Father, thank you for opening our eyes this morning, giving us this day to live and to move, to have our being that you really keep us sustained by, by your love, by your light. So we're thankful for that and to the extent we don't appreciate your many gifts help us to have hearts that are grateful. Help us to abide in this moment and help us to remember that while your kingdom is not of this world, we are to be salt and light in this world. So help council along those lines as it makes its decisions to be salt and light, to preserve, to protect, to bring unity, and to be light and love to this meeting and all they do. In your name I pray. Amen.
Amen.
Mr. Lombard, would you lead us in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next we have county attorney comments. Mr. Root?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, just one. The first item on executive session, this is to receive legal advice and discuss multi-county industrial park revenue and distribution issues. We'll need that on the April, or excuse me, the October 6th agenda, so if I could have a motion to remove that item.
Second, second. Second, all in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Root. Ms. Amanda Brock, county administrator comment?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of council. I do not have anything for comment this evening.
Thank you, Ms. Brock. Now move forward to the consent agendas. Any items, member of council, I can remove from the consent agenda. 009, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda as presented?
Second.
Second, all in favor? And now we move forward to a couple of proclamations. We'll begin with proclamation 2025-09. A proclamation honoring Ms. Ladel Price, Oconee County Director of Finance upon her retirement. Whereas Ms. Ladel Price, a lifelong resident of Salem, South Carolina, has dedicated more than three decades to advancing the fiscal integrity of Oconee County, applying her expertise in governmental budgeting, accounting, auditing, and financial management to strengthen the county's operations, safeguards, public resources, enhance the quality of life for its citizens, and whereas Ms. Price began her service to Oconee County as a temporary employee in October 28th, 1992, performing work in the finance office as an accounting technician, and then in the assessors office as a clerk, a civic indulgence and professionalism from day one. And whereas, on October 4th, 1993, Ms. Price was hired full-time in the treasurer's office as an account clerk, and in February 1997, transitioned to the finance office, where she advanced through the positions of finance and accounting assistant, grants coordinator, accountant, senior accountant, budget analysis, interim finance director, assistant director administrative services, and ultimately in June 2015, was promoted to director of finance. And whereas, over the course of her career, Ms. Price's extensive experience and knowledge shaped her into a respected authority in the fields of public sector accounting, financial management, and budget development, making her a vital member of the Oconee County team. And whereas, through her leadership, Oconee County maintained its record of receiving the certificate of achievement of excellence in finance reporting from the Government Finance Officers Association, while also advancing initiatives such as the P Card and e-payable rebate programs to generate additional revenue for the county and the outsourcing of payroll, which has improved efficiency and accuracy while reducing costs. And whereas guided by genuine compassion and strong sense of civic duty, she has devoted time and energy to the vitality of the community as a member of the Wahala Performing Arts Center Board, and in the aftermath of the Seneca Tornado and Hurricane Helene, assisted with disaster response and relief efforts. And whereas she has been a faithful steward of the county's funds and fiscal records, has earned a reputation for dedication, dependability, and tireless work ethic, and has inspired staff at all levels as a mentor and leader by keeping her door open to offer guidance on budget and accounting matters or to deliver a needed word of encouragement. And whereas after 32 years of full-time service to the citizens of Oconee County, Ms. Price will begin her retirement on October 4th, 2025. Now therefore, we the Oconee County Council do hereby recognize and commend Ms. Ladel Price for her outstanding dedication and contributions to Oconee County, and extend our heartfelt congratulations and best wishes for a joyful and well-earned retirement. Have a motion.
Make a motion.
Second, Mr. Hart, all in favor? And next we have proclamation 2025-10. A proclamation honoring Ms. Deborah K. Sheriff, Seneca Master's District, Senior Court Clerk upon her retirement. Whereas Ms. Deborah Debbie K. Sheriff, a resident of Seneca, South Carolina, is married to Stanley Sheriff, and together they have two sons, William Clay and Travis Sheriff. And whereas, on September 29th, 1988, Ms. Sheriff began working as a full-time county employee as a clerk court at the Oconee County Master's Court. And whereas Ms. Sheriff served as court clerk for Judge L. Butts, Judge B. Gerald, and Judge M. Simmons, and Judge E. McKinney. And whereas, in good times and difficult times, Ms. Sheriff has dealt with a diverse range of people and provided courteous and comprehensive help to county officials, members, and the public and fellow staff. And whereas Ms. Sheriff has become an expert in all civil matters, able to answer any question that came her way, as well as incredibly adept with the court management system since its inception. And whereas Ms. Sheriff has managed the financial and administrative tasks for the master's office, providing invaluable leadership and guidance on many matters, and she would be sorely missed by her peers. And whereas, after 37 years of service to the citizens of Oconee County, Ms. Sheriff will retire on September 30th, 2025. Afterwards, she plans on spending copious hours with her first grandchild, as well as making time for the things that she enjoys, including thrifting, estate sales, and relaxing at the lake house that she grew up in. Now therefore, we the Oconee County Council do hereby recognize and express our sincere gratitude for Ms. Sheriff's dedication and commitment to the county, and congratulate her on the occasion of her retirement.
Second, second.
Second, all in favor? And next we have proclamation 2025-11. Would you ask Mr. Maz to please read?
Let me just first say I am honored to be able to bring this proclamation to the county. This is proclamation 2025-11. A proclamation honoring Charlie Kirk, in the honor of his faith, his contributions to civic engagement, youth leadership, and free speech advocacy. Whereas Charlie Kirk was a prominent conservation, conservative activist, a man of faith, and the founder of Turning Point USA, a national nonprofit organization he launched in 2012 at only 18 years of age with a mission to educate, train, and organize students to promote freedom and civic engagement. And whereas Charlie Kirk not only inspired countless young Americans to participate in a democratic process, but also openly shared his Christian faith, speaking boldly about the hope of the gospel and the eternal truths of God's Word. And whereas Charlie Kirk, his courage flowed from unshakable Christian faith, which he never hesitated to proclaim in public and private alike. And whereas, through his leadership of Turning Point USA, Charlie Kirk encouraged a new generation to engage in civic life, always reminding them that liberty and faith are intertwined, and that moral courage is as essential to freedom as civic duty. Whereas Charlie Kirk was a passionate advocate for free speech and open debate, frequently visiting college campuses and hosting events that championed the free exchange of ideas, including his "Prove Me Wrong" forums, where students of all perspectives were invited into dialogue. And whereas, on September 10th, 2025, while addressing students during an event at Utah Valley University in Orem, Utah, Charlie Kirk was gunned down in a vile act of political violence meant to silence truth and intimidate free people. And whereas Charlie Kirk leaves behind a loving wife and two young children. And Oconee County Council extends its deepest condolences to his family, his loved ones, and the many thousands of young people he mentored and inspired. And whereas, the Oconee County Council condemns this heinous act in recognizing that political violence has no place in free society, and that the answer to division is not hatred, but open dialogue grounded in respect and truth. Whereas, the Oconee County Council affirms the fundamental importance of faith, family, and freedom, and recognizes Charlie Kirk's lifelong commitment to sharing his faith, defending liberty, and encouraging civil discourse. And whereas, the ideals for which Charlie Kirk stood, including freedom of speech, civic engagement, and the empowerment of young leaders, reflect the shared American values that unite us as a community and a nation. Now therefore, we the Oconee County Council, in meeting duly assembled, does hereby honor the life and legacy of Charlie Kirk, condemn the act of violence that took his life, along with all forms of political violence, and reaffirm his commitment to fostering civil discourse, protecting the freedom of speech, and preserving the principles of liberty rooted in faith. Be it further proclaimed that the Oconee County Council does hereby designate September 21st, 2025, as Charlie Kirk Day of Remembrance in Oconee County, and encourages all citizens to reflect on his life, his faith, and his contributions to this nation, and to recommit themselves to the values of faith, freedom, and respectful dialogue that he championed. Do I hear a motion that we?
Second.
Got a second? All in favor?
Thank you, Mr. Maz. Okay, we'll move now to Miller's presentation to council by Ms. Kristi Herbert, the Oconee County Auditor.
Good evening, council. How are you? As you know, I make my annual pilgrimage here each year to present the village to you. One of the things that I have to do is I come and I recommend the village, and one of the things that you need to do is you will need to vote on the village for operations for the county, school, and our special purpose districts. I will set the village for the bonds. One of the first things that I do each year is we work closely with the assessors office and the Department of Revenue where we gather assessed values. Assessed values for Oconee County are up this year. County operations is at 749 million. That's up over, about 7% over last year. School operations is a little over 541 million. That is up 17%. And school bonds is 806 million. That is up around 8%. You may wonder why there's varying, various percentages. It all boils down to, there are some things that are fully taxed in the state of South Carolina by the schools, and then there are abatements that the county portion of the village cannot apply to. So our abatements are up about 23% over last year. And the main reason for the increase this year is real estate, utilities, and vehicles. All of those are up. Utilities and real estate is up over 20 million, and vehicles are up 10%. From there, we have to determine the county of the value of a mill. County operation mill is worth 749,000, school operations 541, and school bonds 806,000. What I do is I take what you approved in the budget process for the county and schools, and then I will deduct out village that is predetermined by council, along with operational village from other factors that can't be used in village. And those are things like fee in lieu of, merchants inventory, delinquent costs, delinquent collections, and heavy equipment rental. Those are reimbursements. Most of those are reimbursements that we get from the state. So for the county, you approved for property taxes 56.6 million. Designated village was 17.9 million. And once I take out all the reimbursements for county operational villages, we are going to be setting village on 36.1 million. Same factors for the school, 86.1 million was approved. And from there, I take out the homestead tier, the reimbursement for legal residents tier, and then also the 1.2 million fund balance that the school district agreed to use this year to offset village. So for their operationals, we are looking to bring in 59.6 million dollars. Again, this is just a recap. Oconee County budget approved 56.8 million for operational. We need to bring in 36.1 million. The school district, 86.1 million was approved for operations. We need to bring in 59.3 million. County debt service, our bond payments this year on the county side is 2.7 million. For the school district, they're 26 million. These amounts listed above are for what is due October 25th through October 26th. Anything that is due before October of 25th was allotted for in last year's village, and we have that sitting there waiting to be paid. One special purpose district, Kiwi Fire, has one bond this year, is $103,000, and that will be covered with their designated village that we set aside for them. Overall, for county operations and tri-county tech, we, I recommend 73.6 mills. School operations, 110. County bond, 2.7 mills, and school bonds, 28.6 mills. As you can see, county operations is a 1.4 increase, and school bonds is a 1.4 decrease. Overall, it will be the same village as last year, 214.9. Here's a specific breakdown of the village for you. Again, what has changed is operations. It went up, economic development went down 1/10 of a mill, and school bonds, again, overall village to 14.9. Also wanted to talk about Kiwi Fire. Their overall assessed value is 69.4 million. In order to cover their 1.2 million budget, they will need the full 17.5 mills that was in the referendum. Corrent Shiloh is new for 2025 per referendum. Their overall assessed value is 50.4. And again, their budget is 1.158 million, and it will take 23 mills to cover that. One thing just to note is the boats and vehicles assessed value is not a true number. It is the best educated guess that we could come up with this year, and I did go in on the lower end of that based on data that we collected. I looked at all the towns, and I looked at Kiwi Fire over the past four years, and their, both of theirs vehicles was around 7%. So with vehicles on Kiwi, on Corrent Shiloh, I went in at 5%. And boats, boats are just hard to do because you just don't know who owns boats. We haven't had to track it, so I didn't, I did not do that. Kiwi Fire was around 6% to 7%, I went in at 2% of their total assessed value for Corrent. So I do think those are low, but we will not know that until we have tracked it a full year. So for the towns, Salem, Seneca, and West Union will remain the same. Wahala is increasing two mills, and Westminster is actually decreasing one mill. Kiwi Fire, no change, and Corrent Shiloh, 23 mills. So as far as tax impacts for the residents, unless they are in Wahala or the Corrent Shiloh Fire District, it should be a flat rate as last year. They should not see a change unless, of course, they've, you know, added on to their home or if it's a new purchase and a new value was assigned by the assessor. In Corrent Shiloh, these are just some numbers that I ran for a $25,000 vehicle. They are looking at a $26.25 increase. For a $50,000 vehicle, $52.50. And I ran the numbers for a $250,000 home. If it's at 6%, which is non-residence, that's around $262 increase. For a residential, $250,000 home, $175 increase. And for a $250,000 home, for someone who has homestead, it would be around $140. I ran these same numbers for Wahala as well. $25,000 vehicle will be $3 increase, $50,000, $6. 6% home valued at 250 will be $30. A residential home, $20, and one with homestead, $16. Does anyone have any questions?
Ms. Herbert?
Thank you for the hard work.
Has the village from Duke Power come in?
It did. Duke Power came in high this year. That was one of the reasons for the industrial abatement going up. Because for the school, if my memory serves me correct, the school itself is going to see about $3 more million coming in from Duke Power. And on the county side, because of the abatements, we're going to get around 1.3 or 1.4 million dollars more than we did last year.
So somebody making a motion to, I'm making a motion to approve, set the village as he already recommended.
I'll second.
Second. And flat taxes, unless you live in Wahala or the new established fire district. I want to thank everybody in the school district for working through that back in the spring, so that can be possible. Any other comments? All in favor? And next we move to public comment session. This is limited to 50 minutes, or five minutes per person. As that you keep your comments related to county business. When we get to a four-minute mark, it's timed on my phone. I hold up a yellow warning sign, and when we get to a stop point, it'll be a red stop sign. When you come up, please state your name for the record. As a reminder, there's no out and back between council members and the speakers during public comment. Any council member can speak following the council member comment session.
For the record, that's Devon Clay. Thank you so much.
No worries. Right, so just want to start off saying, folks could be back here. Appreciate everyone in attendance. Myself, a lot of people don't notice, I'm from Seneca, South Carolina, but both my parents, they're from New York City. My dad still currently resides in Manhattan. What we saw on September 10th was truly disheartening, was truly disgusting. And as a public speaker myself, and one who works in politics and worked in a community, it really gave me a sense of urgency and a sense of fear, just because we don't know truly where the tides are turning. Well, I will add this, though. In New York, we're taught unity, we're taught it doesn't matter if you're Arabic, Jewish, black, Cuban, Hispanic, Japanese, whatever. We all come together, we all come from different boroughs, and we all, you know, united selves and, you know, just communities, and really appreciating everyone and not settling out their background. And on September 11th, that was a day where, you know, even people felt that they couldn't come together. They could, they united. And I've always felt every time it comes around to September 11th, like, it's a time of unity. It's like my grandma, she worked in Manhattan, she was right by the towers and Salt Canal. She didn't think she was going to survive. Me and my other family members didn't think that either. So to see on this day, September 11th, So to see on this day, September eleventh, we were seeing in the news with the death of Charlie Kirk, which is, like I said earlier, most really disappointing. But the one word I couldn't see on September eleventh was unity. I mean, we had people who sit on this current council who wanted to divide us instead of all us coming together. This killing is happening, our nation is sickening. It doesn't matter if you're Democratic, it doesn't matter if you're Republican. Get off your high horse. We need, no, no, we, we need, we need to focus on uniting as a community, coming together and helping those, and not dividing, and, and trying to shout out all the left is causing this, the right is causing this. No, we are one. I mean, we all want to pride ourselves, we're Christian, God said we all came from one person, and we need to do the same thing when it comes to civil operation, for one justice.
Were you here to address council?
Oh, yes, because this is, this is, it's what the proclamation, I'm talking to people because you serve the people. So I, let me finish. Thank you so much, Mr. Durham. So I, as I conclude this, Senator, I just ask the people of this community in our current council to not throw blame, because after today, that's just going to cause more division. That's just going to cause more deaths in this nation, and I don't want to see that. I don't want to have to get on stage and look behind me and be worried that something's going to happen to me or one of my family members. I've already been followed in this county speaking at events. People have personally attacked my business because of my views, and after today, this is America. We believe in having a choice to have our own troops. Well, let's have that truce. And if elected officials on this county want to point out left, right, middle, whatever, shame on them, because I am a Christian, and in this town, we value unity. And if you value anything else, shame on you. And I truly pray for you, and one, one phrase I love in the South, huh, God bless your heart. Thank you so much to the council, and I just want to say, listen when everyone speaks and listen to the end, to truly feel if it is something doing to the county, because this does to the county. You are all a reflection of the county, so what you say on social media represents us. And I don't like to look bad. I run a good business, and no one makes me look bad, so I really hate for my county officials to look, our city look bad, our county look bad. So you know what? Let's do better. Thank you so much. God bless America.
Good evening. I'm Wanda Sheehan, and I want to thank y'all for the opportunity to let me exercise my First Amendment. That's no longer an option in a lot of places now, apparently. My remark is in regard to proclamation of twenty-twenty-five-eleven honoring Charlie Kirk. I oppose this proclam, this proclamation, not because of his unfortunate or untimely death, but because his words were racist, hateful, and demeaning. I'd like to share some of his quotes that inspired me to be here tonight. In twenty-twenty-three, at Turning Pointy event, he said, "We must be honest with the population. Having an armed citizenry comes with a price, and that is the price of liberty. We need to be very clear that we're not going to get gun deaths to zero. It will not happen, but I think it's worth it. I think it's worth to have the cost of unfortunately some gun deaths every single year so that we can have the Second Amendment." And although I can empathize with Charlie King's friends and family, I'm not sure that's what he would actually want, because in regard to empathy, Charlie said, "I can't stand the word empathy, actually." He said, "I think empathy is a made-up new term that does a lot of damage." Charlie Kirk's words were unapologetic racist. Appearing on Jubilee's internet show, Surrounded, Kurt insisted black people were better in the nineteen forties under the Jim Crow laws. While debating a college student, Kurt said, "They were actually better in the nineteen forties. It was bad, it was evil, but what happened? Something changed. They committed less crimes." In regard to black women, he said that Joy Reid, Michelle Obama, Sheila Jackson, and Katanja Brown Jackson were all affirmative action picks. And then he went on to say, "Black women do not have the brain processing power to be taken seriously. You have to go steal a white person's slot." In closing, I do not condone what happened to Charlie, and I did not come here to speak ill of the dead. But I cannot stand in the community. But I can't stand here and let leaders in the community whitewash his racist history. And since y'all are all, obviously, men of faith, I'd like to leave you with some scripture. Isaiah five-twenty, "Woe be unto those who call evil good and good evil." Ava Rains issued a good reminder to us all. She said, "If you want to have people have kind words to say when you pass, you should say kind words when you're alive." And the last thing I'd like to say is I think it's ironic and actually hypocritical that the same council members who are honoring Charlie Kirk for his freedom of speech, free speech advocacy, are calling on politicians and universities in the area to fire the other individuals who are doing the same thing and exercising theirs. Thank you for your time.
My name is Sarah Steib. Since you've chosen to honor someone who was killed by gun violence, I would like to take my time to remember all the students, educators, and staff members of schools that have suffered from mass shootings since nineteen ninety-nine. Columbine High School, Heritage High School, Demme Middle School, Fort Gibson Middle School, Irwin High, McKinley Elementary, Dimmitt Middle, Mount Healthy, North Junior High, Pioneer Elementary School, Newman Smith High School, Humane High School, Osborne High School, Granite Hills High School, Kentwood High School, Santana High School, Monroe City Alternative Center, Waluke High School, Ennis High School, Caro Learning Center, Raymond High School, John Barrett Middle School, Ambler Avenue Elementary School, Scurry-Rosser High School, Wes Carter Middle School, John McDonough High School, Red Lion Area Junior High School, Rockell Butler Middle School, Burns Middle School, Recore High School, Lewis and Clark High School, Marion High School, Fay Galloway Elementary School, Columbia High School, Red Lake Senior High School, Farmington High School, Campbell County High School, Pine Middle School, East Chapel Hill High School, North Hampton Area Senior High School, Orange High School, Weston High School, Platte Canyon High School, Memorial Middle School, West Nickel Mine School, Robert A. Taft Information Technology High School, Virginia Tech University, Springwater Trail High School, Las Plumas High School, Success Tech Academy, Northern Illinois University, Stockton Springs Elementary School, LaRose Cut Off Middle School, Deep Creek Middle School, Discovery Middle School, Woodrow Wilson High School, Sullivan Central High School, SoCasty High School, Kelly Elementary School, Marionette High School, Millard South High School, Issaquah High School, Charlton High, Chardon High School, Episcopal School of Jacksonville, OICOS University, Perry Hall High School, Normal Community High School, Sandy Hook Elementary School, Taft Union High School, Santa Monica College, Ronald D. McNair Discovery Learning Academy, Sparks Middle School, Arapaho High School, Berendy Mills School, University of California, Santa Barbara, Reynolds High School, West High School, Marysville Pilchuck High School, North Thurston High School, South Macon Elementary School, William Velazquez Elementary School, Harrisburg High School, Umpqua Community College, Madison High School, Antigo High School, Townville Elementary School, Mueller Park Junior High School, Wes Carter Middle School, Columbus Giada six through twelve, Freeman High School, Mattoon High School, Rancho Tahoma Elementary, Aztec High School, Italy High, Marshall County High School, Dalton High School, Marjory Stoneman Douglas High School, Forest Hills High School, Santa Fe High School, Noblesville West Middle School, Dixon High School, North Scott Junior High, Villa Heights Elementary School, Frederick Douglas High School, Windbrook Elementary Theme School, Park Rose High School, STEM School Highlands Ranch, Lad People Stadium, Saugus High School, Sacred Heart School, Austin East Magnet School, San Diego High School, Forest Lake High School, Rigby Middle, Bethesda Academy, School of the Future, Yes Prep, Oxford High School, Edmund Burke School, Robb Elementary School, Johnson County High School, Central Visual and Performing Arts High, Fuquay Varina Middle School, Covenant School, Ligon Magnet Middle, Pinion Hills Elementary School, Creative Science School, Bostrom High School, Huguenot High School. Numbers from twenty, that was just through twenty-twenty-three. Numbers from twenty-twenty-four have not been compiled, but maybe as high as two to three hundred, including Appalachia High School in Winter, Georgia, October seventeenth, twenty-twenty-four. Same for the numbers from twenty-twenty-five, which include Annunciation Church School, which was this past August, twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-five, and Utah Valley University in Orem, Utah, September tenth, twenty-twenty-five, and also on that same day, Evergreen High School in Evergreen County, Colorado, September tenth, twenty-twenty-five. Thank you.
You guys know me, I'm Jason Boyle. Um, you know, while we're on the Charlie Kirk issue, I think you guys talking about Charlie Kirk is about as important to me as your prayers, although I wish the best for all of you, and I will pray for all of you. There is a deep-set corruption in this town that if we only look a little bit, we get to expose. And I think we could all agree that Charlie Kirk would say, if there is police corruption in a town, we should investigate it. So I'm going to give you the lead right now so that you can go investigate, and if you open your eyes just a little bit, you will see the corruption of Oconee County forfeiture. Oconee County has been committing forfeiture crimes for many, many, many years to enrich the private participants, the sheriff himself, the police officers, who knows who else, but we could do a proper audit and find out. What happened to David Dawkins has new developments, and we need to discuss them, because now the crime is sealed in the files and open to the available public, open and available to the public. So David Dawkins was arrested supposedly for selling drugs, and he was stuck in prison. At the time, they forfeited all his assets. They took everything of value that David Dawkins owns and put it into the custody of the Oconee County Sheriff's Department. Now, before David Dawkins' trial, David Dawkins died. That means he could not be found guilty of a crime, so his forfeited assets needed to be returned to the family. And in fact, the probate judge signed off and said, yes, the forfeited assets should be returned to the family. The solicitor's office signed off and said, yes, the forfeited items should be returned to the family. But then you got Ken Washington involved, who's an investigator or something for Oconee County. I mean, these guys back there, they know who he is, Ken Washington, right? So he, he got involved, and he communicated that she couldn't have the items. And there was this long stall, back and forth, fighting between the family and the Oconee County Sheriff's Department to get the items returned. Somewhere in the mix, Ken Washington's mistress girlfriend supposedly, at least that's the accusation, Ann Orr tried to cover for him. And so what Ms. Orr did was she said there was an affidavit signed by David Dawkins that said the items that were forfeited did not belong to him. This was obviously a fabricated lie, and the reason we know it's a fabricated lie is because Ann Orr nor Ken Washington could produce the affidavit. Now it gets deeper. After some time, what did happen is about half the assets were returned to the Dawkins family. About half in number, but not in value. All the most expensive items are missing, and there seems to be no paper trail record. Even if the Oconee County Sheriff's Department is going to claim that they had the rights to take David Dawkins' items, they need to say what happened to them, where they were sold, how much they were sold for, and where the money went. But of course, they didn't do that, because the missing items are actually guns. And of course, the guns were stolen by the Oconee County Sheriff's Department and sold off like loot. And so I have to ask you guys, how are we supposed to take anything that happens in Oconee County with any sincerity? I see Oconee County sheriffs arresting shoplifters. You know who I feel sorry for? The shoplifters, because the Oconee County sheriffs are the true criminals. The criminals are, the high-level criminals are out arresting petty criminals. It's a distraction. This is an easy problem to solve. We're a civilized society. What we can do is we can audit the wealth of people like James Singleton, people like the, the solicitors who are accused. I won't name them because I don't have as much evidence on them as I do for James Singleton. But the items are missing, the property's missing, it's been stolen, it's been distributed like loot by Oconee County, and there is only one way it happens. It's when the government structure itself sets up the breeding ground for corruption. So you guys are responsible. You are setting the breeding ground for this corruption, and I would like you to take initiative on your own right and solve it without people like me having to come forward over and over again. Thank you.
David Hammond?
I was crying last time I came up here because they took my mom. Well, they took her again. They did. Wow, amazing, ain't it? How helpless you feel when you don't know nothing about anybody. I even came to the Singleton's office and tried to throw my friend, Jason Boyle, under the bus as a sacrifice to get my mama back, but it did no good. Y'all have plenty of cops that are willing to just snatch people out of Oconee Memorial Hospital, and the thing that surprises me most is that I've got an autistic son. His caseworker worked for DSS. She confided in me that she had to take one child from the mother that was addicted to crystal meth. She told me she called the first cop, and he wouldn't take that baby, not, it won't have nothing to do with it. But then she called the next cop, which was a female cop, and was heard here in Oconee County Family Court, and that female cop decided, yeah, I'll go ahead and take it. So how many times at bat do you have to have? I got my mama back. She got home one night, and I had to rush her to the emergency room, and she stayed there eight days from the nursing home y'all sent her to. I say y'all because y'all basically did nothing to help out or do anything about it. However, people on the outside of Oconee County decided to step in and fire the lead lawyer for Oconee County DSS. She's gone. The one that tried my mother's case, Kay Beret, was, immediately went on vacation after my mama returned, and the new one, after I got the orders served by the Judge Karen Behringer, wouldn't even serve the papers down to the place that kept her, the, the senior care of Aiken Senior Care, Carlisle Senior Care of Aiken, South Carolina. That lawyer that was fired by her boss down in Columbia... That lawyer that was fired by her boss down in Columbia wouldn't even take the papers that Karen Behringer, Judge Behringer, signed for my mama's release. They couldn't take them from me because I was too dishonest and maybe I confessed or did something to manipulate the words. But oddly enough, after six days, they finally honored that judge's papers because they got a mysterious package from Glenda Lindsay, the woman that they had in their custody. Now, after I got my mama home, she was covered in bed sores. She needed a feeding tube. I had her home for three weeks, talked to all types of people that were at my house that were treating these bed sores. Instead of getting a call this time that they were kidnapping my mom, they just did it all okay. No, they didn't call me. That's Nathan Chambers calling me right there. That's Nathan calling me right there.
Nathan Chambers is calling you.
But when I got my mama home, when I got my mama home from, hey, Nathan, you're actually at a county meeting or county meeting right now here in Oconee County. So say hi to all the people that are here listening. So when... Yeah, they hear you. Actually, the lawyer that you stood behind the last time, sitting here looking at my phone like I'm an idiot because I just had to speak. But when I served my emergency motion to intervene this time, it's funny because this merits hearing is so important to these families, judges, that the system is anemic. And when a redneck gets involved into this system, it completely goes into some type of whatever. Six months, my mom's been waiting for her merits hearing. Forty-five days is the limit, forty-five days. That's how long it takes to hear the merits hearing after my motion to intervene should have been heard, and then forty-five days. But because of the lawyers, the guys down in Columbia, they bailed us out, just like they bailed us out the last time when we had outside help from, thank you, sir. When they had, we had outside help from the Department of Homeland Security when they busted one of these pedophiles that was actually working at my son's school. Who would have thought? Brightman, hey, Brightman's actually here too. Nathan, if you want to say hi to Bridgman or Brightman, whatever he's... He's here too, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. And not, hold on, Nathan, let me finish off right quick. And this man here, this man here is sitting in Oconee County Jail, where I assume that probably most of y'all think he belongs only because he knows his civics. He knows what his constitution says. It's not because he was practicing. I accused him of being a private investigator, and that's all that was needed for me to get him arrested. That was it, me saying he was my private investigator. I hired a private, you know, that's a misdemeanor here in Oconee County? Me just accusing this man got him locked up, got his bond revoked, and now he's sitting in jail. Thank you, I appreciate it. All right, that's it. I appreciate it, Nathan. What'd you want?
Anybody else want to speak? All right. Sir, would you, if you're gonna talk on the phone, please go to the hallway.
All right, now we move on to council member comment.
Yes, sir. I can't quote the book, chapter, verse, but it seems like to me it's a place in there that says, "Judge not lest you be judged." That's the only comment I have because that's one that you need to sort of take personal when you're starting to judge other people.
Thank you, Mr. Harp. Any other comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I've got a comment. There's, seems to be a lot of quoting of Bible and Christianity. And, you know, I've heard people ask through the years, you know, how in the world have we gotten to where we're at today? With the stuff that we're seeing all around us, the violence, the just lawlessness everywhere, it just seems to be accepted and celebrated at times. And, you know, instead of me commenting on that, I've got my Bible with me. So I'm gonna read to you what the Lord says about that from Romans, Chapter one, verse eighteen. Says, "For the wrath of God is revealed from heaven against all ungodliness and unrighteousness of men who hold the truth in unrighteousness; because that which may be known of God is manifest in them, for God hath showed it unto them. For the invisible things of Him from the creation of the world are clearly seen, being understood by the things that are made, even His eternal power and Godhead, so that they are without excuse. Because that, when they knew God, they glorified Him not as God; neither were thankful, but became vain in their imaginations, and their foolish heart was darkened. Professing themselves to be wise, they became fools, and changed the glory of the incorruptible God into an image made like to corruptible man, and to birds, and to four-footed beasts, and creeping things. Wherefore God also gave them up to uncleanness through the lust of their own hearts, to dishonor their own bodies between themselves, who changed the truth of God into a lie, and worshipped and served the creature more than the Creator, who is blessed forever. Amen. For this cause God gave them up to vile affections; for even their women did change the natural use into that which is against nature. And likewise also the men, leaving the natural use of the woman burned in their lust toward one another; men with men, working that which is unseemly, and receiving in themselves that recompense of their error which was meet. And even as they did not like to retain God in their knowledge, God gave them over to a reprobate mind to do those things which are not convenient. Being filled with all unrighteousness, fornication, wickedness, covetousness, maliciousness, full of envy, murder, debate, deceit, malignity, whisperers, backbiters, haters of God, despiteful, proud, boasters, inventors of evil things, disobedient to parents, without understanding, covenant breakers, without natural affection, implacable, unmerciful, who knowing the judgment of God, that they which commit such things are worthy of death, not only do the same, but have pleasure in them that do them." I've heard it said throughout the years that, you know, if America doesn't change and this nation doesn't change, that, you know, God is gonna judge us. I think if you read through Romans, Chapter one, specifically verse twenty, where it says, "For this cause God gave them up." God gave them over. "God also gave them up repeatedly," he says that. What we're seeing in this nation right now is the judgment of God because He's removed His restraining grace from wickedness and evil, and He's giving man over to the wickedness of his own heart. He's no longer restraining man from evil. And that's the result of what we're seeing today is man left to himself without God, and this is what you get. Every person sitting in this room, every person on this council, every person sitting out there, one day, we will stand before God. We'll stand before a righteous judge. There won't be selective quotes or cherry-picked quotes. We're gonna stand before someone who knows our heart in and out, and will give answer for every idle word we've said and for everything we've ever done. Every one of us will stand before God. And there's only one way that you can escape judgment for that. That goes for us up here, for everybody out there, and that's through the finished work of Jesus Christ, who bled and died on the cross, who got punished for my sin and your sin. And it is only by faith in Him, His finished work, and His shed blood that you can escape that judgment. The sadly ironic thing is that there's people in this audience that are on the left, there's people that are on the right that don't know Christ. And unless you place your faith and trust in Christ, you're not only gonna sit in this room with each other right now for a few hours, but you're gonna spend eternity in hell with each other because Jesus Christ is the only answer. That's all I've got.
Thank you, Tommy. Any other comments? Here and now.
Mr. Chairman. I have a request for one more public comment. If it's acceptable, please.
Let's take a motion to extend public comment for one more comment.
Okay, motion. The other man, Josh, moving forward.
Thank you very much. My name is Corinne Sweet. I live in Oconee County. I went to church Sunday. I didn't know I was coming to church tonight. I thought there was separation of state and church. And obviously, that's not so here, and it's disturbing. The other thing I want to say is I'm very much against your proclamation, 2025-11. And that is because Charlie Kirk did a lot of good for a lot of people, but I don't believe he was a hero, and I don't believe he should be honored because he also did a lot of dividing. He also said some awful things. One of the things was that homosexuals, gay people, should be killed. And I totally disagree with that. And there's many other things. He said they should be stoned to death. Let me get that right. And he was a racist. He said most people are scared when they see a black pilot flying a plane. He also said no one should be allowed to retire. I mean, some of these things that he said are just way out there, too far out there. And he was an influencer of many people. He said Martin Luther King Jr. was an awful person. Let's see, there was a few other things. She already covered the one about gun deaths. Women's natural place is under their husband's control. I mean, I know he's coming from a Bible-based faith, but I don't think it should be pushed on people. And he said George Floyd had it coming. The January sixth protesters didn't. And the nineteen sixty-four Civil Rights Act was a huge mistake. So we are, you know, you all are wanting to honor this man who was a divider, not a unifier. And I think that politics and religion should be separate, should not be in here. I don't think we should, I don't think we should be quoting from the Bible, or at least you guys because you are representative and of the state in this county. And so I just think that should be separate. And that's what our founding fathers wanted. Thank you.
Anything else before we move on? Can we have public hearing, two public hearings? Our public hearing is for the ordinance that is being proposed. Our public hearing ordinance, 2025-15. Ordinance amending, Chapter ten, Emergency Management Services of the Oconee County Code of Ordinances by revising the provisions of Article two A entitled Rescue Squad Advisory Commissions and Other Related Matters.
We have no speakers.
Speakers. Our closed public hearing ordinance, 2025-15. Next is ordinance, 2025-16, and ordinance amending, Chapter ten, Emergency Management and Services of the Oconee County Code of Ordinances by revising the provisions of Article two B, Fire Service Advisory Commission and Other Related Matters.
We have no speakers.
No speakers. Our closed public hearing ordinance, 2025-16. Now we move on to third reading of the following ordinances, the two ordinances that we just had public reading on, public hearing on. I'm not gonna repeat them. First one up is ordinance, 2025-15. It's on your screen.
Make a motion.
Second. Second is the only discussion. Here and now, all in favor?
Good spot, Ed.
Next, we have ordinance, 2025-16. Again, previously read on the screen. Have a motion. Second, Mr. Harp. Any discussion? Here and now, all in favor? Next, we have second reading of the following ordinances. Ordinance, 2025-17. An ordinance authorizing pursuant to Title four, Chapters one and twenty-nine of the Code of laws of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, as amended the execution and delivery of a special source revenue credit agreement by and between Oconee County, South Carolina, and a legal entity identified by the county as Project Beamer, acting for itself, one or more current or future affiliates, and other project companies providing for certain special source revenue credits designating certain property to be included in a multi-county industrial park and other related matters.
Second.
Motion, second. Any discussion? Here and now, all in favor? First reading of the following ordinances. We have three. We begin with ordinance, 2025-18. An ordinance authorizing the execution and delivery of an amendment to the lease agreement between Oconee County, as we saw, and the United States of America/Department of Agriculture, as we see, in relation to certain premises located at three oh one West South Broad Street, Wahala, South Carolina. Second. Any discussion? Here and now, all in favor? Now, ordinance, 2025-19. An ordinance authorizing pursuant to Title four, Chapter twenty-nine, section sixty-eight of the Code of laws of South Carolina, nineteen seventy-six, as amended the execution and delivery of a special source revenue credit agreement by and between Oconee County, South Carolina, and a company currently identified as Project Joshua Tree, acting for itself, one or more current or future affiliates, and other project companies collectively company providing for a special source revenue credit and other related matters.
Second.
Any discussion? Here and now, all in favor? Next and final, we have ordinance, 2025-20. An ordinance clarifying, ratifying, and/or authorizing certain acts of Oconee County, South Carolina, in relation to the distribution of fee and lieu of tax revenue received from the joint industrial and business park wherein the property or board owner, PBS USA Incorporated, is located, and other matters related to it. Motion, second. Any discussion? Here and now, all in favor? Next, we have council committee reports. We have Planning, Economic Development Committee, Mr. James.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman. September, at the September second, twenty twenty-five, Planning and Economic Development Committee Special Meeting, discussions were held regarding the extending the current I eighty-five overlay district and sub-district boundaries to prohibit gambling or gaming establishments in this area. Should gambling or gaming be legalized by the state of South Carolina in the future? The next Planning and Economic Development Committee meeting will be held on Tuesday, October twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, at four thirty P.M.
Thank you, Mr. James. And I would just like to thank you for leading the way on that. I don't know if you saw this week, after you brought it to our attention, the state GOP sending out things advocating against this and saying that they're being lobbied. All right, next, we have board and commission appointments. Have no questionnaires on file for two at our seats. Next, we need a motion to enter executive session for two items. First item is to receive legal advice, discussing personnel and personnel in relation to the structure and administration of certain Oconee County government departments, divisions, boards, and commissions. And two council discussions on personnel matters related to the county administrators.
Second.
All in favor?
Second, are we in favor? We need to have one item, but we need to address coming out of executive session.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. In relation to executive session, item number three, if I'm not mistaken. This is a discussion of personnel matter related to the county administrator. We need a motion to direct the county attorney to draft an addendum to the county administrator's contract to be executed by the chair of the county council that would effect an eight thousand dollar a year raise and a one-year extension to the county administrator's contract.
So I have a motion.
Second.
Second, I just want to say with that, that that raise includes the cost of living raise which all employees received and is still working, the extra on top of that is to work towards bringing the administrator into ban of the salary study, which the county brought all employees minus the administrator to within that range. So this is cost of living plus extra to try to get it within that range. You're not in favor?
I have a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion.
On our favor?